This conference will now be recorded.
Right, we're at 6:03 PM on April 29th. We have all three members of the select board here in town hall. And we'll get right into business. Noel Wiki's due to be up on the Conservation Commission. I would propose three years through June 30th, 2028.
My second motion.
Any other discussion? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you Noel for serving.
That's unanimous approval for. And then we also have Stephanie Sloan for three years on the Cultural Council through June 30th, 2028. And I'll move that. Any other discussion?
Second.
We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thanks to both of those people. We're really trying to get off of the off-schedule appointments, but for various reasons, there's a few lingering.
Can we put those back on to the regular?
They are, they are, yeah. June 30th. And then Mass Energy Insight account, we need to sign a letter to get.
Basically a standard letter. The Mass Energy Insight gave me the dot, how to write it up. So it's for Martin Brunk as a member of the Renewable Energy Working Group, a member to receive access to the energy data for the town of Monterey.
And that's to pursue green communities.
Is that National Grid and the other one with solar?
Uh, I don't know if Next Amp is part of that, but I don't know if they're part of that. Stephanie, National Grid.
Well, National Grid would have all the statistics.
Yeah. I don't know if they're, uh, Next Amp is part of that information.
Since Tom is here, do we want to bounce seven up to five and?
Yep. Let's do that. Tom, thanks for joining us.
You're welcome.
Hi, Tom.
Hello, everyone.
So we'll get right into the Housing Committee Charter. Anyone have any questions?
I had a couple of things I wanted to suggest. Um, under topics suggested but not limited to assess town owned and other properties for housing sites. I thought the Monterey Community Center property should be on there. I know it was on the thing that VRPC prepared for you. And, you know, maybe it would turn out not to be suitable. I know there's wetlands, but it's a pretty good sized site and it could very possibly accommodate some housing. So I thought it was worth at least putting on there. How do you guys feel about that?
Well, I mean, I, I think it's open for discussion.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good spot, but I think you should at least consider it, yeah.
But don't, I mean, it's, you don't ask, you don't know.
Exactly.
So I don't, I don't, it's good for discussion, yeah.
Um, and under consider funding solutions to housing, um, I thought considering starting some type of, like, I'm concerned about the status of possible federal funding because I think that a lot of times the federal funding is very specific for certain types of housing. It puts a lot of restrictions on it and I, um, another possibility would be to either find a 501(c)(3) or have somebody who's willing to start a 501(c)(3) to actively do fundraising to see if Monterey could, I don't know, cloud fund, um, you know, GoFundMe foundational money to start a building project so that at the end of the day, A, we might not have loans or anything and B, we might be able to structure that housing any way we want it to. Like for people living and working in Monterey or for people working just in South County with a certain adjusted annual income or whatever. I don't know what that would be. But my point is if the purpose is to make it affordable for younger families and people who live and work in Berkshire, Southern Berkshire County to live and work here, then we may not be able to use federal funds to achieve that goal and meet that goal, right? Like, and I, I get that people who work in Dalton or Pittsfield need to be able to live somewhere too, but I can only do what I can do and a few houses here for our people would make a big difference.
Yep, yep. And, uh, yeah, those are great suggestions, Susan. And, um, that list was really ideation, not, not a requirement, so anything. And on, this is a start, anything that we come up with as the Housing Committee is, is put together. Uh, one of the, the requirements or suggestions, I guess, depending on how, how we want to put it, for meetings is to have a joint meeting with the Planning Board and/or Select Board quarterly. And as we all learn more every day, we can make suggestions like that to say, hey, does this fit into your current discussions or can it be put on the list for future discussions? Or, uh, just to stay in tune with what's being talked about.
Atlanta just started a thing. I think I said it to everybody. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it. They're, um, they have an organization that's giving a thousand dollars a month to firefighters in Atlanta for housing subsidy. For the possibility of living closer to where they work.
We've got a, a list of about 14 people that hopefully will come up with many, many creative ideas to.
I don't know if it's worth mentioning, Tom, what might be done regionally, which is a kind of a hard concept to grasp even for myself, but maybe there's no lot in Monterey that makes sense. But Monterey could go in with a neighboring town, you know, because housing 10 minutes from the town center that happens to be in Otis or Tarrington or New Marlborough still helps us achieve our, our goals. I mean, maybe not our, our goal, but people who live right across the border in some of those towns are gonna potentially be involved in our town in various ways, maybe less so, but.
Who owns the Eagleton property?
I think the original people still. Did the original people still own that? It got split up. It got split up into different groups.
But I feel like that the gym and that big building on the, on the north side, I don't know.
The one that does.
It says on the contract on the, on the side.
Is owned by people who host the AT hikers.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't, so I don't know. It's, it's really hard to picture, but it seems like one of the things we run up against in Monterey is, is not necessarily having the buildings or building lots that just make sense to repurpose or to build new on. And if the time came where we could in some way chip in and help in some way, you know, a housing development at Eagleton or across the border in another neighboring town, maybe we would be, maybe we would be interested in helping in some way.
Yeah. I, I mean, one, one idea that maybe if we could, if there was a landowner that was along 23 or in a, a good position that had a bunch of land, they could donate a parcel for, in trade for tax abatement or something to make it available for building. Or I, I think there's a lot of creative solutions that could be hashed out, um, as, as it gets going. And, and really the, the purpose of this document was we, we've got a list of people that put their names down on our housing, at the housing forum. And we said, well, what are we gonna tell them when they, when we call them up and ask them if they're still interested in being on the Housing Committee? Their first question is gonna be, well, what do I have to do? So that, that's the, the question that this document is meant to answer. It's not meant to be an exhaustive, these are the things you have to do. It's just, let's get a bunch of good people that are interested in housing together and, and get them started with a few topics and, and, uh, help the efforts of the Select Board, the Planning Board, anybody else who's interested in housing have a, have a place to go with ideas to, to keep them moving forward.
So really the, the foundational part ends after a meeting frequency, yeah?
Yeah.
The rest is just suggestions, yeah.
Yep, and, and, go ahead.
Well, I just have two other small points. When it says year-round attendance, are the meetings going to be hybrid and should that be specified? Because one of the problems we have is people travel a lot and then they can't necessarily make meetings. But some people are really, uh, devout at coming to meetings remotely.
What makes you say that, Justin?
Like Tom at our meeting right now. But I do think it's an important question because we do have people say, I wanna get involved, but I travel all the time.
Yep. No, I think that's worth mentioning because that's, that's our thinking around the seasonal is even though, I, I think to keep the pool fresh, we wanted to offer it to seasonal people as long as they said they'd participate year-round. And, and I think if they're in Florida, they might wanna have that option.
I mean, you could, if you were, if anybody was concerned about it, you could say, um, you know, uh, online attendance is welcome. We prefer you to be physically present at least X number of meetings where X is, whatever, you decide. And that's not necessary, but I'm just saying like, I, I personally think that being in person is different and always being remote changes the nature of the conversation, but that's just my feeling. Still better to have people remote than not have them at all.
I agree. I'll add that in. Uh, you said you had a couple of points, Justin.
Well, yeah, well, I'll bring it up anyway since I mentioned it. It was just quarterly joint meetings with the Planning Board and/or the Select Board. It's a little vague. I just think it's good science and nailed down. What tends to happen with groups is we say, this is the meeting that we wanna do. And then over the months and years, expectations change. I think a quarterly meeting with the Planning Board, I think, makes a lot of sense. And maybe with this, I mean, maybe it's too, it doesn't even make sense to nail down now because it's just the kind of thing that develops as needed. But I was thinking of a way to re, to change the wording, like maybe quarterly meetings with the Planning Board and that's just a must and, you know, with the Select Board as.
Once yearly with the Select Board or, and is with the Select Board as needed or?
Yeah, something. I don't know. It's a small point, but, you know, when we first made the Renewable Energy Working Group, I think the goal, it was something about having a report and finalize within a year. And that's just not how, I think this is pretty realistic and I, I think it's both, I think it's a good pace of meeting. I just figure maybe the more that's nailed down, the less, as things develop.
Well, you, you, you're the chair of the Select Board. How often do you wanna meet with the Housing Committee?
As needed.
As needed. So maybe quarterly with the Planning Board and with the Select Board as needed. So that could be once a month if there's busy times and it could be, it may be the first six months they have their heads down and they're learning, which is what we found with the Renewable Energy Working Group. The first year or so was talking to different groups and just getting a feel for what's out there.
All the rules.
Yeah. And then it was, all right, now we know the programs, these are the ones that we want to participate in. And that was, then we have to find money for a consultant. So does that, does that seem to work for you with the Select Board as needed?
Yeah, my, my, I might put annual or some, some number in there. I, I think it lends authenticity to the committee to say, hey, they're somewhat reportable to the Select Board and the Planning Board because the Select, in, in reality, I think some of the recommendations coming out of here might be around tax, uh, policy, around other things that the Select Board is gonna need to be involved in, not only the final decision, but the discussions leading up to. So I, I think some of it is gonna be ad hoc. They'll show up at a Select Board meeting because they've got something that needs your input. But I, so that's kind of the message I was trying to get across. Do I, are we gonna fire them if they don't show up quarterly to the Select Board meeting? I, I don't think so, but it just, it just sets the bar somewhere and that, that's my, our.
Like, the more you talk about it, I do kind of like, and or as long as they're meeting with one of us, maybe that does make sense because some things are gonna be purely Select Board matters that don't really involve the Planning Board, maybe.
Right.
So maybe, maybe leave it the way it is. And which is why I wasn't gonna say anything, but I had messed up by saying a couple, a couple thoughts. Sorry.
You're good. So, so the question after this, if nobody has any more comments, does anybody have any more comments?
I don't.
No.
So, so the only, so what we're gonna do from here, our plan is, um, now that we have your agreement in, uh, the makeup of the board or, or, uh, the charter of the, of the Housing Committee, we'll reach out to the people that, at the Housing Forum said they might be interested in the committee. Hopefully some of them will say yes and we'll ask for your, we'll make recommendations to you that hopefully you'll approve of.
Yeah.
And, and we're, we're gonna try and do that on a timetable that, we're gonna keep it moving forward. So hopefully by the beginning of the summer, we'll have some people that are ready to get, get going in whatever form that looks like.
Do you foresee putting a planning, suggesting a Planning Board member be on the committee directly?
We, we discussed that and decided not, um, that we, just to keep it, we've got enough things to focus on, on our own and we didn't wanna add necessarily to that. And, and I think it gives, that way we're not overly influencing either way with our agenda, which might, might differ from what the Housing Committee comes up with.
At the same time, I think the more that Planning Board members can attend those meetings, Select Board members can attend those meetings, the town administrator can attend those meetings, the more effective they're going to be because we all have some experience with the state of current things. And.
Can help people come up to speed quicker.
Yeah.
Make sure they're, they're clearly versed on, you know, OML and proper procedure and how annoying it is that you can't share work product, you know, that stuff.
Yep.
I hope, I mean, I just, I like to think that we'll all kind of take turns attending them to some degree, at least at outset. So.
Yeah, I, I know, uh, the members of the Planning Board feel kind of the same way that we wanna get them started right, but don't wanna necessarily be that committee. So we'll, we'll be there too.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks for working on that.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions in preparation for town meeting?
No, I don't think so. I'll, I'll, I plan to stand up and, uh, well, I have to stand up and give an oral report on the two articles, uh, that are on the warrant. I'll keep it short and sweet. I, I may give a little plug during that time for the Housing Committee, but, um, and a little bit, little bit of an update on other work that we're doing, but I'm not gonna spend much time. And I think where it's close to the last item on the warrant, hopefully somebody will hang around long enough to listen. So I'm, I'm good.
Well, thank you for joining us.
You're welcome. Good night.
Good night. So, uh, moving on, Town Administrator approval of special event permits. So Roger and I were talking last week and we found some old Select Board minutes from last year.
Last year like this time.
When we got a bunch of special event permits and we said probably the town administrator should just handle those unless there's some controversial application. And, uh, we never actually voted on it.
Never did. Oh, we did?
No, we just talked about it.
We talked about?
Come back, yeah.
I thought we dealt with it, but we're not. Alright. I move that we, um, endow, officially endow the town administrator with the ability to approve or deny special event permits, allowing him the opportunity to bring before us any potentially controversial or problematic ones.
I second that.
Any other discussion? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
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 Oh, the power.
He's got the power.
I just, all I did was add, all I did was add the town administrator as a signature line. Cause there was, there was no signature line even for the Select Board.
Alright, sorry, I'm catching up here. It's taken minutes and we need a meeting.
What changes were the fire company proposals? What was the?
No, what I had asked for is a document that says, this is what we're gonna do. This is what, what is the balance left out of the total project.
Do we have that?
No, I haven't seen any.
Okay.
And that they will cover any overage.
Okay.
They, they're providing the numbers and they said it was, I believe, 17,000 or something.
And you communicated with them verbally?
No, I haven't, I haven't, I didn't.
Oh.
Sorry, that was probably a miscommunication. It was on last meeting's agenda, so I probably just took it.
Ah, you're right then.
If you want, I'll communicate with them.
That, that would be good because if you don't, then we may not get that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, okay. I, I have no problem. I'll write.
Okay.
I'll write first and shortly.
That'd be cool.
Okay.
Sorry. I often hate.
That's fine, don't worry about it.
We're not upset.
Prepare for annual town meeting. Sorry, I, I just needed actually 10 seconds here to catch up.
One, two, three.
Um, so I don't know if we have a whole lot. Well, it's in the firehouse, right?
I know, oh.
But still, I think sometimes affects it. I think, is it supposed to rain? I do, I mean, I don't know how much we have to repair, but are there any items we're thinking one or the other us are more likely to wanna field? Not that the others can't come.
Yeah. Um, well, I got an email from Lori Shaw today about the community center article.
I was gonna raise that, actually. Rain.
What did she, what did she say about?
Oh, the community center article?
What about the pavilion?
She emailed me about the pavilion.
Oh, she didn't, it wasn't that.
It was just me. It said Justin.
Yeah, yeah. No, I thought it was gonna be about the hour.
And she said, I hope you can explain the financials because.
It's confusing.
Yeah.
I have someone else come in next year.
I know.
Well, I told, I told everyone years ago that we should keep the lighting money and granted, that's the least confusing of the three, but.
You made that bullet point.
The CVG that's really confusing.
Yeah.
Or is that hanging on?
Donna committed to help explain because, so Donna at first was like, I don't know if you should do that. And then she talked to Bailey Boyd, Cassie, Cassie, or Bailey Boyd, who's the consultant that ran that program. And then she said, oh, I understand now why. And Eric, our accountant, is gonna be there. I'm not sure how familiar he is with it.
He's, uh, both him and I spoke to Cassie at one point. So just to kind of try to understand where everything was coming from. So the only other, uh, annual town meeting, uh, thing that I have is that, um, the budget, I think I've mentioned that the budget for the school is not correct. So. Yeah, so. So what happened is back, I can read these if you want. So back on 4-1, I was reaching out to, um, to, um, the school to ask what the budget was gonna be to try and get a better number or even before that. And I got a document, this document here, um, that shows what Monterey was. This was on 4-1. So you go down through and at the end it's 2,084,686. There's a total operating budget of 1,997,082 with the capital, the two capital items, which comes to that 2,084, 2,084,686. And that's a number plus the school stipend. It's all, it's all right here, uh, down in the pink, assessment breakdown. Down in the pink under Monterey.
Right, total by town.
Total by town. So then when you add the school stipend on top of that for, um, for, um, Kim, right, Kim? That's 2,086,412.78. That's what we've been using all along for that number right there. So we voted on the warrant, which concluded this number on a Tuesday. The following, the, the next day, I got this document that came on 4-16.
It's like, what, 6,000 or 8,000?
It's, it's about, well, when you take out the, um, when, when you take out the 1,726.78 for the school stipend, right, it is 11,017 dollars short of what we budgeted for.
Less than.
Less than what we.
Yeah, she told me the other day, yesterday.
Yeah. So we have, where we have in the, the line item at the bottom of that line item for, um, for the, uh, for that, this is 2,086, 2,000, 2,086,412.78. It should actually be 2,075,395.78.
Is this duties?
Yes.
Okay.
I know.
So.
So we are.
It was like, what, 11 or 13,000?
It was 11,000. We're.
Cause I, I.
That's without the stipend. So I, I, when I said 13, it was because I had the stipend in there. But our bottom line dollar, not including the stipend, is 11,017 dollars more.
Eight or nine thousand dollars.
The warrant has 11,000 plus more than we actually need.
Yes.
So it will be 11,000.
Less, yeah.
I think, I just thought we'll let it slide. Christmas in April because it's last. But they need to know that by April 16th, Monterey is signing a warrant. We have the first town meeting. I forget where I saw it, but the list of all the town meetings, ours is first. And we did two and a half weeks before.
I'll put it in my calendar to remind them for next year.
Well, I think also just a note to say, really by the first week of April is that's.
Probably when they need to have that.
Drop dead, final number.
Yeah, yeah.
If you, if anyone runs into Kim, you can say.
I've been talking to her. I've had a couple of discussions with her, I developed her.
Because it, like, if it went the other way, $20,000.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Then I just voted on our original number because.
I'd tell them to come back to Rex's.
Because, you know.
Bank is closed.
By April 16th, you're not safe with the final number.
Yeah, so luckily the other way around.
The other way around.
But that may be part of an argument that Lori might use as well. But she's looking for more money for the community center because we increased the hourly wage, but not the hours. And they were looking for 15 hours instead of 10.
Okay, here's my question.
They said a 12.
Uh, they have 10. They're looking for 15.
Okay, but I just wanna point out, there's two, no, yes, 10 hours. So here's my confusion. There are three different, well, two different numbers in three different minutes that we looked at. One said 10 hours, like discusses the change in salary, but says 10 hours and the other two say 12 hours.
My bad.
Well, what my question is, is how many hours do we wanna do?
How many hours are, how many hours are in the budget?
It's for 10, right now.
Okay.
Which is, which is what they, what, what do you mean?
Yeah, but I, yeah, but I, I didn't sit in on the community center meeting. Did they ask for 15 or is that?
Yeah.
And we changed it in here.
Yeah.
But I thought we had changed it to 12, not kept it at 10.
Or 15, kept it at 10.
Let's just run that number altogether. We're, we're, we're sure that we're not surprised on Saturday. Where, does anyone remember what number it is?
It's, uh, oh, on the warrant.
It's 6, 5.
6 is it.
And it's 13, 7, 8, 80. Divided by 22. How many weeks are we doing in here?
52, 52 point, uh, 2 is what it is, yeah, 52 point.
So that's 12 hours a week it's budgeted for.
So.
Yeah.
I thought we'd done 10.
Well, it's 12.
It's 12.
And it must have been 12 last year because awfully similar. It's a, it's a very similar.
I swear, cause I have a note, it's 10.
But I just did that amount divided by 22 divided by, so it's been 12.
Yeah.
So it's 12.
It's 12 hours.
Is that Kim?
It's Kevin. It's Kevin.
It's Kevin, Kevin West, right?
Um, so it is currently at twelve. Any minutes it said ten, there's some confusion, but it's.
Okay. I would bring it up again.
Well, I mean, let's, so if you pay someone twenty dollars an hour for twelve hours a week times fifty-two point two weeks, you get thirteen seven eighty eighty, which is?
Uh, thirteen seven eighty eighty, we have thirteen five twenty-nine twelve.
That's last year.
Oh, you're right, thirteen seven eighty eighty.
Thirteen seven eighty eighty. So that's twelve hours. In my opinion, dropping in one air doesn't, isn't any reason to raise any other line, but especially in a year like this.
Yeah.
But people can, I mean, people appreciate that way.
That's correct. She can, she can move it on the floor and people can decide if they wanna do it.
The only thing I hope is that she, is that we have that rate number four fifteen, which would be.
What's four fifteen?
Fifteen hours, personally.
Four fifteen.
Fifteen hours.
Which would be seventeen to twenty-six.
Twenty-six, that's what I have.
Yep, that's all. So that if we do vote that way, it's the rate number.
Yep. Okay. What's our quest?
Um, anything else on town meeting or?
Uh, I had one thing I wanted to raise for us to think about, and that is um, a couple of people have asked about why we're extending Jen.
Extending what?
Jen. Um, and my concern is that Gareth was not extended. And I really am not sure if this gets raised at meeting. I want us to be prepared for it, how we address that.
Did Gareth ask?
I don't know, I was not on this live word at the time.
I don't know, I too, but I thought.
I came on in time to hire Brian, but not, he would've had to be approved before the previous.
Did he ask?
Yes, hey, yeah.
Uh, not when I was on the board.
So if he, so maybe he didn't ask.
Too, but it, it, it's, another question is, because he's a public police officer, does he have to retire? Would he have to retire because of his age?
Unless we extended him, so he would've had to ask. But if he didn't ask, then that's the answer.
Well, I can say that three select board members don't know about my extent, asking for an extension, so. Too, so, you know, I, I'll go with that for ten, cause I think, you know, they do, you know, they're a good group there.
Oh, I, I, I have no problems going back, but that was specifically raised to me and I said I couldn't answer because although I did participate in the hiring of Brian, that would've had to occur before I.
Before, yeah, before you decided to put a job post.
Right.
Um, I'll tell you this. I do not ever recall being presented with that request. And I think that I would remember, there's a chance I blocked out a certain part of my memory.
I think there may be.
Trauma.
One of the most traumatic experiences.
I thi- I think there may be differences in their situations too, because.
I think there's a lot.
Because uh, I'm sure Eric, they've been a long time, uh, police officer, so there's, I think he had his retirement. And Jen unfortunately is not in that situation.
I don't know if she's been, I've talked to her.
So it's a different situation.
We're also in a situation where we know right now, there are, there's not, there's a staffing shortage of everything and definitely of trained competent police officers in this part of the county. So I, I feel like that, that was not as much the case even a few years ago.
And I, I wanted to mention too, that on the fire side of that, Edermont, I was just looking at their town warrant, actually has a, an article to allow all of their fire department to uh, be sixty-five, over sixty-five. It's a, that they're, that's an article that they're voting on.
I, what happens in the Macamair Act?
Down at the great majority.
Voting for it, I don't know.
Oh my gosh.
It's senior citizens' fire department.
Well, it's, but it, it, like. My understanding of the Macamair Act is they'll be liable for a million dollars each.
Yeah, but I mean, you know.
Someone has to cooperate, right?
They, they do quote that there is a master of law, so maybe there's, the NGL with the.
Okay, I'll have to check that out.
But anyway, that's.
Interesting. Anyway, okay, so, I mean, but if he never asked, that's the answer, but I didn't know because I wasn't, it happened before me, cause it would've been on the ATM.
My, my sense as well is that if he had asked, it would've been done, so.
Yeah, that's why.
I, it would be, we'd be in a tricky spot if we had denied someone three years ago.
Yeah.
But I really don't think that's the case, and if it was, it wasn't any of us.
Right.
Unless I'm having a blackout, which I don't think that I am. We could look at.
I didn't remember it after we discussed.
Through the minutes. I really don't, I think it would've been a big deal if I had been denied.
I agree.
I would research about this one, I would just say that.
Well, if, for some reason, I'm forgetting, I want to know, so I don't stand up at a com meeting and say, I never voted that, and I'm wrong. Right?
And I maybe, I maybe I'm just writing something that won't be an issue, but to different people, I don't even know if they know until they ask me that, I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah.
I just said why we're doing it with Jen. So, okay.
Uh, do we wanna do Kevin?
Yeah, so, can I put this on the agenda? In case we had to sign a letter or take an action, but I, I really don't think that we do about the Bear Town Road, Bear Town Mountain Road treaty. I think Kevin has it under control, he's working with the town council, the town administrator to respond.
So what, what is the planned response? Cause we're gonna take two down, the first one off the third down.
Well, we haven't really gotten to that even, so um, right now, we're at a point of, that's what his lawyer said.
We're, we're, we're at a point of responding back to his lawyer, which my, my response at this point is going to be based upon all our previous conversations that I've had with Kevin, with town.
From what you said, sort of put in your email, but.
Yeah.
I didn't hear it happen.
No, no, it's.
I thought you were, you responded, well, makes sense.
And I think uh.
Then the lawyer got involved.
Yeah, I think that my only response could be to reference that email again, and my, my initial email and say that we have to wait for the, the, the trees to bud and wait for the um, the, the tree warden to look at those, look at that tree and make it part of our, um, you know, we've already agreed in conversation with, with the tree warden to um, to, you know, prioritize that stretch of Bear Town Mountain Road at the beginning of July one fiscal year and that, until that time, the tree will stand and, you know, if, that, that's kind of where we are at this point. And I don't, I don't really know of any other response, other than, if our, our concern is that, you know, I, I did speak to Pete Wilson and, you know, he's, he um, you know, he doesn't have a problem taking down the two dead trees. It's, it's the tree, the, the, potentially the live tree, that he doesn't wanna take down because it's too tall. It's uh, too close, it has a potential for falling, you know, falling on uh, walkways of, uh, the gate. It's too tall for us, we don't have the equipment to trim it and all that, so he doesn't wanna take that responsibility by cutting it down, so.
Alright, well, I think it's under control and I don't think that we have to do anything.
Yeah.
Kevin, are you there?
Is there anything you wanna say?
Yeah, you can chime in if you can.
Yes, ca- can you hear me? I'm, I'm here, I've been listening.
Yes, we can.
Um, I, I'm not sure that I have anything else to add. Um, I, I've spoken to Roger, as you said, um, and I've, you know, I've been sort of using him as the conduit for information while I'm away. I just wanted to be here in case you had any questions. Um, it's uh, you know, I mean, I, I defer to the select board because of course with, with the attorney, uh, with town council getting involved, it, it suddenly uh, changes the, the states, right? So um, but my, my overall position has not changed throughout any of this. Um, and I continue to think that it's not an emergency, um, that we, that we need to change course. Um, you know, and that the way we've been talking about it, uh, the way that I've been talking about it with Roger, um, seem, continues to seem to be a, a rational course. But eh, with town council involved, it's just over my head now.
Well, and I, and I heard back that, I've, just to let you know, I've not only spoken to our highways, uh, highway department through Pete Wilson, Kevin West, the tree warden, I've spoken to um, uh, Chief Thady about it as an emergency situation. I've even spoken to, I've spoken to town council about it. I even got in touch with uh, um, the DCR and spoke to Peter Church up there, um, and also Eric Reynolds, who's a forest health supervisor up there. And his thing was that, you know, his recommendation is uh, to wait. His recommendation is to wait, so everybody seems to think that the most ideal thing to do would be to wait and.
And we're doing our due diligence as a town, which I feel, I feel comfortable, and thanks Kevin for what you've done, that we're doing our due diligence and doing things the right way, and I don't think we're cutting any corners or doing anything unsafe. We're just treating it like we would any other tree and I appreciate that. So if there's nothing else, I think at this point, it's, it's not really our issue. I'd put it on the agenda just in case we had to do something, but I don't think.
Okay, okay, well, thank you very much, and if you need me, Roger can get ahold of me on my cell phone at any time.
Thanks, Kevin.
Alright, Kevin.
Um, are you gonna reply to town council's help to that email?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll get in touch with her tomorrow morning.
Yeah. Um, town administrator updates?
Uh, a few things here, um, opioid funds, we're all familiar with the opioid, opioid funds that we get. So um, we get these uh, funds that come in, I didn't really know what they were about either, I just kept getting emails that said, based upon this settlement, there's this hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred, three hundred dollars, all kinds of things. And so we were approached at some point uh, back in January of, or February of twenty twenty-four, we, uh, there was a decision to uh, actually, actually, I think it was at the special town meeting before that, it's years before that. There, there was, it was, it was.
It was like twenty twenty-two.
Something where a decision was made with the Railroad Street Youth Project in Bray Barrington.
Yeah, was it Railroad Street Youth Project or was it the South County Recovery?
But it was very confusing because Laura or Erica, maybe now they're under the same branch.
Yeah.
Laura left South County and works at Railroad Street maybe.
Oh.
Got it. There's some overlap between employees.
Okay, but my understanding was it was South County Recovery, not Railroad Street.
But I think it's from South County Recovery.
Well, we sent. Well, we sent an invoice to um, Railroad Street Recovery in January or February of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
You know what, so Erica is currently the accountant for Railroad Street Youth Project or the finance director, but she's talking with Gary Pratt, who is South County Recovery. It's a little confusing.
So that's where the payment went.
So isn't, did we not send it to the right people is the question.
So she says she's the finance director of Railroad Street Youth Project, the fiscal agent for Rural Recovery Resources Inc.
Oh, because of South County Recovery Center, I'm trying to find out who their people are. How about who we are?
Stuff in uh, in Bray Barrington can't keep their name straight between the different microtransits and that.
I know, and I think even the uh, the uh, um, well, the article itself that was on the uh, on the um, on the warrant at the time was not specific, so.
So, wha- wha- something happened. When we first got the first payment or two, the state wasn't clear about how we could use them and the right accounting procedure. And then they streamlined it, but there's a gap in there, right?
So, so initially what happened is, when that, when all the issues came up with this opioid settlements, there, uh, to Justice's point, there was no um, accounting, you know, how to. So whatever monies came in, went into free cash, and that's why the first time that it was paid out, it was a free cash article. And then the state changed the regulations and they created a, a chapter seventy-seven of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, and they said that you could start um, creating accounts, a reserve fund account, effectively like our expenditure or revenue accounts for, for those. So in between then, up to FY twenty-five, um, all this money was put into um, free cash. So right now, there's about two thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents that was in free cash that is available to give to um, to, to give to this organization.
And so I, I just would like us to do due diligence to make sure it's actually going to rural recovery, which is where we intended it to go. Um, and not to rural, I, not that I don't like railroad youth, I think they're a great organization, but opiate money should probably go to the opiate recovery. Um, the guy, the director's name is Gary Pratt.
Yeah, he's on the walls.
Erica. Right, okay.
He's right here with this email.
Erica also said in her email that she's, I read you her title, and then she said they're restricted for payment to Rural Recovery Resources Inc.
Okay.
So the check will probably be to Rural Recovery Resources Inc.
Yeah.
I, I just wanna make sure it's going to the right place, that's all.
So what that means is there's a uh, there's two thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents that at the next special town meeting, we're gonna have to have an article for it.
Or annual, whenever.
Right.
And there's a nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and eight cents that's actually in a expense account that can be uh, paid out like a regular revenue. That, that's money that came in after July first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
So, so every, every, it's like, it seems like every month you do a, month or so, I know.
Once you do that.
So hard.
I know, I know.
Alright.
Uh, let's see, um, the, uh, for Collins Center, the Collins Center, um, well, I guess this is like unanticipated business.
Yes.
The Collins Center um, has an invoice for after July fir-, after January first. Our contact, our contract with them only went to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, so they would like us to sign an extension. It's only looking for one signature, but Justin had suggested that maybe I, we go back and we say, why don't we do, just make a contract for another year? So I don't know if that's something, to, to, to the end of December, I, I haven't gotten that to.
Just, let's just sign it.
Okay.
Right, as long as no one's opposed to it.
Nice.
So, we had talked about this and we thought we're just gonna be doing it without a contract.
Yeah.
But they probably need one for.
They, we, we have, we have an invoice, it's just for that one invoice.
I have to reach out to her, I'm just concerned that last email went unanswered, I'm worried she has some health issues, but hopefully it wasn't just. I, I'm hoping Lindsay just like lost it in the maelstrom of emails and that there's nothing wrong, because that thought is, I don't know, especially next year.
So I, I, I meant to uh, put this on, on the agenda, but it kinda got buried in some stuff. But at our last meeting, I had mentioned about Lindsay Ersti wanting to give me a grant.
Yeah.
And uh, so she had sent me a grant writing request form.
Okay.
So I have a grant writing request form, like if you want to sign it, it's basically um, uh, name of the grants is the Fallon Health Mini Community Grant and the MCOA Service Incentive Grant. And um, it's uh, to support the increase in cost for the South County Connector in FY twenty twenty-six. Is the Fallon grant, the MCOA is to support expanded services in discussion with South County on specifics. The Fallon grant is uh, upwards of about twenty-five hundred dollars, the MCOA was three thousand dollars. She's looking for, for do about eight hours at the thirty dollars an hour that we've been talking about for grant writers currently, so it's at two hundred and forty dollars. We have enough in our, remaining in our grant writing, so.
I move that we do it.
As a signature.
As a signature. We'll call a vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
And yes.
That'd be awesome. Go Lynn.
Yep.
Banker for us, because it's awesome that she's saying that.
Yep, um, some FYI's and transportation stickers went out, the, the applications went out, I'm sorry, sorry. Not the stickers, the applications, Mickey, just the applications.
When did they go out?
Uh, yesterday.
Oh, okay, cause I was gonna, I was just gonna ask you how come I haven't received it then.
Yeah.
Thinking that just was, got off the lips.
If last year, uh, application letters didn't go out, whoo, it was tough. Oh my gosh. I will say though, that we were lucky, there were several, there were several uh, um, citizens that were willing to take them and pass them out to their friends. And so we got them, we got them out uh, just yesterday, I think it was.
Is that last year?
That was, that was last year at this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so everybody was like, they came in in June, they were like, where's our applications? I'm like, what?
No, I remember that.
Yeah, so that's all, that got out there and uh, which is good. And I, I have to talk to the company tomorrow that does the website, hopefully May uh, on the first, everything is all set on the website as well to start collecting monies for FY twenty-six.
And it'll say somewhere before the checkout page, how much it is.
I, I, I've done it in three places myself, and I asked them to put it on the landing page that it's a hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay.
And so I'll be calling them tomorrow just to make certain that it's all set. And um, did I just say Zoom? Did I tell you about Zoom? No, Zoom, no, I got a Zoom uh, account set up, so I was just talking, uh, just for this meeting here, I uh, suggested to Justin that the next meeting, we just try and do a Zoom meeting and see how that works. So we'll try that and see how it works, getting away from um, it took me a while because I had to wait for them to accept our um, tax exempt status. A little while, even though it was not that a hundred and sixty dollars. And I don't know, I did, I did forward, last little thing, I did forward this to you today, it came to me today. It was, it's from the Southern Berkshire Regional School District, it's from Beth.
She's responding, I'm pretty sure from that meeting.
Yeah.
And I talked to Kim, and Kim had a, Kim, you know, I walked away from Kim that they had it under control. Kim, you know, I walked away from Kim that they had it under control. They are working. For a public safety officer at the police department out of Sheffield that's the hire. She says there's money in the budget. They said it was. But she said there was everything that was in that letter. I'm sure that was a response.
Yeah.
Saw it was Paula Alfred sent out, so.
Yeah, it sounds like they're.
Yeah, I talked to Kim for twice. I talked to her for a while.
They're doing some work partnering with a school in Connecticut for a district wide safety team or the subcommittee of our district wide safety team is partnering with the model school in Connecticut. They're gonna work on something called the drill week and beginning in the fall of twenty twenty five. And our kindness and safety webpage remains their important resource for the community, offering updated information. So that just came, that came late this afternoon.
So they they wanna have, they're gonna have another meeting in June about it. They're gonna be able to announce that one again. I think it is. It may not after the response from the superintendent.
Yeah.
I think it's June fifth. I got it.
And that's it for me.
So are we at anybody else have any tests?
I was the only one. I was talking to Kim. What about the? The camp half moon?
It's gonna put on the agenda and I just felt like we have to do minutes a area for this meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I I can each out to them, but I talked to them a few times.
Yeah.
Before I see it's closing up.
And here's the other thing is anything that we will do will not happen soon. It would be November at the soonest. I'm wondering frankly, at this point, this is where my head is at, if we can single out, this seems totally wrong in so many ways. But also like what we kind of need to do, could we single out summer camps for noise and just make a by law about summer camp noise? And if you have a summer camp, these are the expectations because we're not, we don't seem to have problems with construction or.
What about just camps? Do we need to restrict it?
Well, yeah.
I would feel would be covered too.
Yeah.
I mean, they're probably being good actors, but.
Yeah.
I numbers were told me that was not always the case.
Oh, no, it was a big, it was as big of a deal as Kamala is now.
And you don't know what happens when all it takes is the next set of people that come through changing policies for Kamala problem. So I I would say camps with large bigger systems like. You know.
Does that mean they won't be blowing the bugles for getting up? We used to hear that in Camp Cadima all the time at our house. My kids loved it.
It's a great camp.
Camp Cadima where the bookies own that property now. It was camp there. It was a summer camp.
Is there a book about, did Bernie Drew do a book about all the summer camps that used to be in Monterey?
Should have.
Is there anything in my birdie?
It's kind of sad that that like there are so many fewer summer camps than there used to be.
Well, it's probably the noises she's not.
No, I don't think so. It's probably the money. Well, I mean, camp was when I was a kid, I don't know about you, but my folks used to send me camp and it wasn't. Pardon?
You rode your horse to.
Well, I remember I was at camp. I didn't have a horse back then, but the thing is it wasn't, it was like affordable. Most of the people going to camp were from very middle class, like not, they weren't wealthy. I didn't go to wealthy people camp. I went to ordinary people camp, right? Yeah, you know, and it was affordable. And then by the time Miriam was old enough to go, I was like, what? Right? Like the cost, just the cost of housing and paying people, it was insanity.
There's probably five or six of them in town at least.
Was there?
Or there are?
Camps.
There were probably five or six.
Five or six. How many, Mickey?
Like the Schwartz property.
On the on Lake Garfield.
And Lake Garfield, there were.
There was more. There was like.
Three than I think.
Yeah, and there was two where Hume was, right? So that's five.
And I think.
Let alone in Bear Town.
Schwartz property up on Art School Road, I think was a town.
Yeah, that art camp. That's why I went art school.
Yeah, well, that was exactly. Yeah, but that, oh, that was a camp. Yeah.
I think it was a school.
Cause they didn't come down. Cause the ones on at Lake Garfield used to walk down on Wednesday afternoons to the store.
When you ran the store?
I ran the store. Yeah.
Do you want to run it again? No.
Actually, I had a plan for that. Can I say that right now?
No. Moving on.
You're gonna kill me with suspense.
I know, right?
All right. So I think. Yeah. Man, a whole group of people, I think we'll have men will talk about it. Now it didn't seem like the time.
That's why.
And there's two options. One, we can do like a camp thing or the other is they can do a citizen, like write it and do a citizen.
Yeah, they can, but. If we. They can.
I mean, look, even if it comes from us.
Yeah.
If they're willing to campaign for it and try to expend energy to educate people about why it's needed and how it would be beneficial. So much the better because the problem is when people get hit with something like that at town meeting and they have all those questions.
It flops. Yeah.
It flops because no one was prepared for it or understands why.
I don't, I don't think any of us were very super passionate about it. I don't.
Yeah, we are.
And I probably wouldn't be. I mean, yeah.
But we're not living next to it either.
No, I understand and I feel for them. I also feel for the people that say. I don't want one more rule and restriction and.
I agree with that.
They reason like I, they moved up here so they could kind of do their own thing. And sometimes they're playing their music a little bit loud on the. And it's a balance, I feel like.
And I mean, basically, you know.
You know, you don't want to be disrespectful, but you want the police shrine for your house cause you. You got, you had a wedding and you're having a louder party on a Saturday night once in a while.
No, but I gotta say, if it's every weekend, I would be happy to.
If it's an Airbnb.
They shut that there.
Yes, and that would be a bad neighbor, right? Only at some point, it's your two bad neighbor, you're gonna have to have some recourse.
No, absolutely. Well, that's why, that's why. Well, that's kind of why I'm wondering if we can, while still making it a fair thing.
Right.
Say camps.
Yeah.
Because we're not having a problem really with.
In general.
In general. It's really been the last couple of things that Hume thing drew on for years. This has drawn on for years. It's really been about camps for every weekend, every day. Their PA systems are turned all the way up.
Yeah.
And blaring over the whole neighborhood. Let alone the other behaviors. I did have one more thing on our unanticipated. Lee Davis's assistant got back to me and about the house, the recall special legislation.
Oh, yeah.
And. They're holding hearing, when is it? May?
Fifth, it's coming up soon. Was it the fifth? Was it the week after that? Yeah, I I did see that. I'll I'll put that out.
So is she gonna bring it up at the?
Well, it's on the docket. It's on the.
It's on the docket. Okay, cool.
So it is.
Wow, it might actually happen, at least in the house. They have this passed in the House and Senate?
And this is a joint, I don't know the inner workings, but this is a joint committee on elections.
Oh, it's a joint committee? Okay. Okay.
And there's a way to submit testimony. So I will forward this to you all right now in case you want to submit testimony.
And I'll put it out on the website. I saw it coming.
I saw something today that the Trump administration has lost a hundred and twenty cases in court since January. In a hundred days. Right. It's not, it's a big one iota difference because he doesn't care and the law has no teeth, right? He's immune to it and or believes he's above the law. And so it, I don't know how much impact it has because really. The courts can't enforce that.
I just think you're doing something you gotta just keep doing.
I heard.
So since we're on, just a quick thing, since we're on with Lee Davis, talking about Lee Davis, I also spoke with Serena, that's who you spoke with, so I spoke with her too. Specific to Airbnb's madness as well. It's probably specific to Airbnb. It was brought to my attention that during the. Reservation process of Airbnb in the town of Monterey, that there is no. There's no notice or anything. There's no information concerning the collection of taxes, specifically both taxes, the six percent and the three percent. And it's, I reached out to the DOR and didn't really get much back. And I reached out to the business's office and they're trying to get in touch with Airbnb about this. It's kind of a real mess. That other communities are having to. So there are other communities that are deborders for New Marlboro that's struggling a little bit too because it's based on the zip code. And so there are Great Barrington zip codes down around Lake Buell that they're assuming that the money is going to, is collected and being distributed to to Great Barrington. As opposed to New Marlboro. So I, it's it's a kind of a, so.
At least it's being collected because it wasn't clear the Monterey ones are even being collected.
I don't think ours are even being collected because it doesn't show up. Because if you go and you do, go through the reservation process in New Marlboro, you get to a point and you click it and it says. It's collecting for the state of Massachusetts in New Marlboro or the state of Massachusetts in Great Barrington. Over here, you click on the reservation process, you click on the tax and it just says state of Massachusetts, doesn't say Monterey. So I have a feeling that.
Some of them are. So you're figuring that you're working, you're figuring it out.
Yeah, yeah. I think the, I think like the VRBOs and those sorts of things are. They, because they collect differently, I found out too. VRBO requires the the owner of the properties to submit tax to the state directly where Airbnb collects it for the.
Ah, right.
So it's a different process. So anyway, yes, I'm keeping up on it. So.
All right.
Minutes?
Minutes. What do I start with?
Uh, let's go chronologically, three thirteen.
Good Michael.
Good night.
You don't want to hear me? So we've got all these minutes.
That one, that's all is not good. My, my. Do you just keep adding the numbers? I leave, I don't know.
Community Preservation Act, I think I deleted two and replaced with an at after CPA. Cause it said CPA two a future meeting and I said that a future meeting.
Yep. The only other thing I couldn't remember for sure is Lauren and Chip weren't there. That's not a good question to ask.
Lauren wasn't there.
Lauren wasn't there and I don't think Chip was.
I don't remember Cheffing. Is that Edward?
Yes, he gets a kick out of it apparently. Monterey is the only entity in his life that really knows his real name. Somehow we.
Throw down. I've been to a couple of meetings. I don't remember him being there.
Because he's Chip at the meetings and Chip in his whole life. And to Monterey, he's Edward. But I don't know how it worked out because we have other people certainly with nicknames at the same meeting, but somehow. Somehow someone along the way got down as Edward and you think you never met because you match up.
Just call Mr. Aaron.
I I will move that we approve the minutes of three thirteen twenty five.
I second the motion.
Call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Approve unanimously.
All right, we're on Hannibal minutes, right?
And then March eighteenth?
What are you on this one?
You can make that change on page two.
Proceeded with a quorum under joint meeting with finance committee to trust FY twenty six budget. Um, and then I, there's a bigger one under transportation.
And the finance committee vote concur to proceed.
What?
Are you looking at the?
Right.
That was one of those things I was writing in and I was like, I don't know how to work this. All right, moving on.
We've all been there and thank God. This is the reason we all need editors. Everyone needs an editor. Getting rid of editors is a terrible idea and it's gonna be the downfall of the news industry. It already is. I was trying to be positive.
It's usually not good.
Good, good, great. Better than mine.
I I gotta say too, when you, when you read things that people have self published without an editor.
You can tell.
Oh, my God, can you tell?
Are you, are you ever gonna get to the point? Uh, I move that we accept the meeting notes for three eighteen twenty five.
Um, wait, have we finished fix the one under transportation?
I looked at it.
You're good with it?
Yeah.
Okay. So as mentioned.
As amended.
A second.
Call vote?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I must say approved. After three eighteen is three twenty five eleven AM. So I don't know what happened, Susan. We might have already done these. But that's, I couldn't find them. It doesn't help that we're behind in minutes because in the minutes is where you find where the minutes were approved. So it's a vicious cycle.
With your three twenty five?
We're three twenty five eleven AM.
Yeah. Yeah, so I reset them out. I thought we had done.
I got two, I took the two not, I got.
I wrote it for first, so to say.
No, I I I printed out the wrong one. I printed out the three twenty five.
Do you want me to send it to you now?
Yeah, I can.
Did, um, what happened with the Lake Buell boat ramp?
So Mark's been started my text messages for a month because I.
Yeah, I remember.
I mean, look, right here is my wife and then Mark, so I. I left the name.
I was, I'm really good.
Good, yeah.
I just like feeling pretty like.
Yeah.
How are you doing?
Yeah, I'm okay. I mean, it's.
She's not complaining about it?
No.
Are you?
The first trimester is part of the most.
Usually it is.
Um, but the third trimester, it's a lot of babies to be on your internal.
Yes, yeah, I know what you're saying.
Um, yeah.
So.
I mean, admittedly, my friend who most recently had twins, so that's a special case. And there was a lot of complaining from someone who doesn't, I mean. You're talking about a woman who gets chopped off a horse, has a broken arm or clavicle and it's like, yeah, so can someone drive her to the ER? And she was complaining. So I'm just saying, you know, everybody's got their own dollars, though.
Yeah.
I think this, yeah, this is good.
All right.
Okay.
I think we're good.
We might have, I'm sorry.
Right. And so I did have a note, did the Lake Buell want a boat ramp monitor? At least they go back then.
That's, I gotta do that tomorrow.
So that's what you were, that's what you were asking for. Okay, that's fine. That was my only other note for tonight, so I can pull this back.
All right. She was drafted and Frank said they're good. Three twenty five eleven AM is good then.
Yeah.
Three twenty five evening.
All right, I got on this one. Most of these were tiny things. I think I deleted an S in application, round two application instead of application. Uh, what else?
You did the twenty six budget under the far. I printed out your change, didn't I?
I was just wondering, it might, it might be.
You changed some number.
Oh, yes, I hadn't gone to that one yet. Um. So not increased copies for ambulatory and scans. I suggested you add the word ambulatory.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know. It was another.
That's okay. Ambulatory is pretty funny. Um.
This newest button is really, like I'd magnet your hand when you're getting, they say I'm the right minutes.
Why did I delete an O? Oh, ultimate goal on a few years. So third line in discussion and vote to place prop two and a half override question to the six valid.
End user, yeah.
Yep, okay. And then, yeah, so it's, I, it's, maybe it's a small thing, but it's one thirty two. The number looks higher, but we're not, remember that if we're not, it's vacation hours.
Yeah.
That number, the vacation is coverage, it's going to someone else.
Right.
So the position might cost us that, assuming we're hiring someone at his time and a half, but he doesn't get that money.
Right, right.
Because he's on vacation and it's already being covered in.
Right, right. I understand what you're saying.
Right, yeah. That, yeah, so those numbers are actually coverage money. So it generally doesn't go to that person.
Right.
The Kelly hours might, but the other ones doesn't. Anyway, okay. So I move the three twenty five, twenty five, five PM be approved as amended.
I second the motion.
Call vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, what's that next? Three twenty nine?
Yep.
Three twenty nine.
Kind of just like a. The 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 notes for your each slide, right? Kind of this.
Kind of, yeah. Who did these ones? I didn't even look at the bottom. Oh, thank you. Pleasure.
So if these are pretty good, they'll be the basis for. The next meeting unless there's any, you know.
Right.
Questions that someone asked differently at the end because it was pretty similar, right?
Right, except the, I think the override total didn't get asked at the other one, but just for clarity, it's a dollar fifty two thousand property value, you caught that? And I just added the Department of Local Services product, yeah, same back there. So other people can go find the damn thing if they want to do it. See for themselves. I did not make it up or pull it out of ad. I think the two dollars was something Mickey said, but it's based on calculations that I have subsequently and independently discussed with Don Fawcett and I think it's better to use my number. Not just because. and I think it's better to use my number, not just because it's slower, but because it's more accurate.
Um, if you don't mind, do you have those, the slideshow and the handout readily available?
Yeah, sure.
Do you wanna email them to me now?
Ooh.
Cause the next thing after brood is post.
I just, um, I will try. I seem to recall that the slideshow may, you know, did I?
You know what you're doing.
Did I, you know, do you?
I think you created it as a PDF.
Yeah, I.
I had to create it as a.
Yeah, yeah, I have this PDF, it's on, it's on the website, it's a PDF.
Okay, so there you have it.
It's on the.
I think, and then I.
What about the handout? Is it also up there?
The, which was the handout?
The ten, ten things?
Oh, no, I don't think that.
Um, that's, it is, because it's on the last page of the.
I think.
Oh, yeah, we just, we just printed it out and handed it out, it's already in there.
Okay. Okay.
For that reason.
But I think on the, the main page of the website is the links to, thinking of PowerPoint presentations, I think so.
Alright.
I believe so, I tested it.
Too long, so.
Right, so do you still need it if it's already up there?
No.
Okay, cool. Yeah, there was a whole thing, you can't, I, it was too vague, you send, so I had to turn it into the PDF just to send it, it was really.
They are, they're.
They're, they're bears, yeah.
It's the same thing, but it's there, there's links there.
Okay, are we up to four one then?
Yeah, no one had any comments on that.
Well, just ones that we already.
Yeah.
Alright, four one. Um, yeah, one little thing in the prior year bills thing, just, just a wording thing. This is a lot to do, dude, you've that. So just the two little word changes, I think. Not a big deal. Are you feeling like it's gonna be a load off you? I've gotten all these done.
Well, we only, we'll only have twelve for maxing it, no.
How many hours did this take you?
I don't know, think about it.
Um, I moved that we approved the minutes of four oh one twenty five as amended.
I second the motion.
Call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Um.
And four twenty four? Or did I miss one?
So I think, yeah, the four eight nine and fifteen we don't have, but we do have four twenty four, which was the budget hearing.
And I think I didn't send it to you, cause I had zero uh comments. You got anything, Frank?
No, I totally.
I moved, we approved the minutes of four twenty four and twenty five.
Are you gonna post that PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah. Yeah, right?
Yeah, of course, that's.
Four twenty four? Yeah, so that's, you know, on one hand, we put a little bit of a, well, let's approve these ones, yes.
Okay.
Uh, yes.
Make a motion that we accept the four twenty four uh minutes.
I'll second. Second, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so the minutes at four twenty four are approved as stress, so, um.
And the handout, by the way, was printed out of the PowerPoint. That is literally what the handout was.
Okay, so there wasn't really a handout?
There wasn't a handout.
Okay.
There was, it was a version, but they were so tiny, they were completely illegible, so better not to do it.
There was.
So, um, one of the things was we were like, we gotta get it through, we weren't in the budget, that's the main priority, minutes and day pause.
Right.
And but the other thing is it's nice, people can glean a little bit from the minutes as to things about the budget if they want to.
Right.
It's, you have to really dig, but someone may, might say, I mean, I'm gonna read through, if we ever saw anything about the community center being ten hours, we should correct that, did, did you catch that anywhere?
I, I, yes, uh, so if you wanna correct it.
I did find it.
Um, in three eighteen it says ten hours and three, the other two it says one.
Okay.
So three M can be the ones you wanna correct.
I'm just gonna correct that to twelve, because, I mean, people might read the minutes and go.
Yep. Right, what's going on?
Why did the sidebar turn down the?
Thank you for reminding me, cause I, I took the mid, I'm.
Yeah, I don't know what I'm gonna think, but.
Okay, cool.
Um, so it's nice for people to be able to look at that stuff that they want. I mean, I'm also having people right now ask me questions about the warrant that are answered in, in the, in the cover letter. So you can throw too much information at people too.
Well, I'm less likely to read it. Me and I read some of it. I mean, I, I'm getting, you know, different questions.
I usually just say all questions go to Roger, right?
Exactly.
You know.
The bill is, how do you figure this out, you know? Couple of questions about the bill.
Magic, what's that?
This is a project or what happened?
Nothing, this has got a weird date on it, I'm trying to figure out why. It said it was last amended March fourth.
When was last amended?
This document that I accidentally closed and had to get back open, when I went to the finder, it found it and it said it was last opened on March fourth, and I'm like.
Is your date wrong in your computer?
Maybe, but no, I don't think so. This is Tuesday, April twenty eighth. So that was weird, because I saved it and then accidentally closed it and then reopened it, but it's wrong. But that's okay, because I didn't lose anything and it's a document supposed to be, and we're all good, just was weird. Okay, uh, what else we got?
Do you like savings time, really? I don't have any savings.
Do you like savings time? Um, are we meeting, we're not meeting next week, right?
No, our, our next schedule. Is, cause next week, if we were to meet, it would have to be not Tuesday or not here, and.
Oh, yeah, I'm hoping.
So it is.
The thirteenth.
The thirteenth and we'll elect a chair of the board and.
They meaningfully looked at Justin.
So the thirteenth of May.
You're gonna worry about.
I mean, Roger, you think you can make the thirteenth to June, I don't think you can, let's do it.
No one was looking to.
Um, so, and another thing I have on that is the poll petition for Brett Rhodes, which is way overdue
Right.
and also not a big deal. Other things that could come up are, I think it might be worth having a conversation about beavers at some point. And going through old town meeting minutes.
Somebody approached me about a beaver issue on Fairview. Thank God to bring it up.
Well, no, that's okay, I mean, so it's an ongoing thing. I think there's always gonna be some amount of tension between people that.
Wanna take it out or don't want to.
And don't wanna take, and to some, I think it's unavoidable in many ways. I think also the more information's out there about the damage that it can be done and also maybe the more selective the town is with uh using it when it's needed. We can make the disagreements not as big.
And fewer in part.
And I think we can also do a policy of, of communication. So one of the problems in the most recent incident was that the residents called the police. The police went and removed the trap because they thought it was an illegal trap, even though the town had gone through the permission. So there should probably be some standard operating procedure around notifying a butters, landowners, police, town administrator, when there is gonna be a trap, so that ever, so that there's, we remove that and if we're selective with when we do it and we make people aware of why it needs to be done, then it will not remove all the tension, but just make it better.
And, and there'll be more, like, people at least will be informed and if they have an issue, they can then raise it in a timely fashion and we can try and resolve it before it becomes, you know, exposed.
Cause this is not the first beaver thing, I mean, one that.
The ones that are gonna be the last.
Unfortunately, we kinda left hanging was the pond up on Sanus Hill Road where the two landowners. This was maybe a year, year and a half ago, they didn't really like what the town was doing and. Um, I think it'd just be good to have something in writing, a few years ago, I was looking at old town meeting minutes and what was it? They proposed to eliminate beaver trapping or something.
Yeah, something like that, I've been looking at.
And it did, got tabled or.
I think actually Fairview Road is a um, is a good example. And you should take a chance to go up there and look and see.
I, I did.
What can happen.
Oh, really?
I mean, it wasn't clear to me, given that the beaver are on the downstream side and usually beaver dam, I let the water accumulate upstream, but it, looking at that topography, it did not look to me that the downstream beaver action was going to endanger the road.
Uh, it, what, what happens is backs up into the culvert and if the, in the winter time is the issue.
Oh.
So, cause it backs up underneath, not necessarily underneath, but it can back, it fit into it, but can back underneath it. And when it starts to freeze.
And then it would just go over the road once it travels.
Well, well, when it freezes, it can lift the road.
Right.
And lift the culvert.
Uh-huh.
Up into the road.
Right, right.
So that's, that's one of the issues, why they like to keep the water below the culvert.
Right.
So.
Cause you also told me, Roger, that the whole idea around be, around culverts is changing because they're really wanting water to not.
Yeah.
Slow out of culvert and have a drop, so they continue through.
Yeah, there's this whole process they call hanging culvert, you can get grants, so they don't, with the natural, uh, um, the biodiversity, the animals.
You want the wa- animals to be able to get into the culvert upstream as well as down.
Yeah, so, so what they're, but the culvert at my new parents' house, which is pretty big, the water drops a couple feet, yeah, so there's a lot like that.
Right.
So what they're designing now is big wide open, more wide open culverts that have, kinda like what they're planning for here.
In arch, like in arch rather than a tube that drops.
Open bottom.
So, so, so that's just your basic old fashioned circular culvert that, you know, probably has a little bit of a drop.
But then, what we're also gonna get is probably exactly what you testified against, which is high engineering costs and high installation costs.
Well, you know something, if we could hire beavers to.
Honestly, there's a reason for that.
Yeah, hi, beavers.
Cause really, the thing is, none of these things are as complicated as people wanna say they are. And I say this as a freaking ecologist, I understand about biodiversity and all the rest of it, it's not, how many have been built? It is not, I mean, honestly, it's much tougher than rocket science. It really is, it's not all that hard, right?
Alright, should we gotta continue on there, there should be a journey.
So we're just saying, no, we should continue.
Life like the engineer is baking concrete.
Alright, we're, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We'll vote on it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, seven twenty four.
Yeah.
Let us hope for a peaceful town meeting and that I don't need to get psychological.